Mm-hmm.
Call this meeting to order at six thirty four P. M. On Tuesday, February eleventh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are the republic, the nation, under God. The freedom and justice for all.
Okay, floor is yours, Mr. Lebo.
Okay, nobody in the room, a few folks online, we're gonna move our camera. Make sure it sees the screen the way we want it to. So, this is our budget hearing for the public, staff members, interested others to see what the proposed budget is for next year for the Johnson School, ask any questions they want for clarification. And it's presented in the same format that your previous superintendent, Tony Parentozzi, presented it, which I think was a really good way to do that. Anyone that needs more specific detail, I do have a line by line version of it. And speaking of versions, we actually are showing tonight two versions. Version one is the budget without the addition of a possible additional staff member who will appear in version two. And that staff member would be a new position of an ELL, ELA, and math specialist who would work with non-special education students who struggle in those two key areas of their educational experience and try to catch them up, keep them up, and put them in a good position to be successful. Many schools have math and ELL specialists. Usually, they are two different people in bigger schools. There's an ELL specialist, a reading specialist, a math specialist. In a school of our size, we would need to combine that and have an individual that did both of those, went into classrooms, also pulled kids out, gave suggestions for teachers to reach kids and differentiate their teaching and learning for those children. So, I'm personally a real favor of version two if we can somehow be able to afford version two. And I'm gonna go through version one on the screen on the PowerPoint. Our plan is to discuss this tonight, answer questions, and then on February twenty fifth, vote on a budget to then send forward to the town side of the FinCom and the Selectmen for their consideration, who are working with all the other town departments to put budgets together. DPW, police, fire, all have needs and competing needs, and there's only so much available for all of those budgets. So, having said that, we're gonna go right through. There's your school committee members who work very, very hard for very little money to oversee the Johnson School, and we thank them for their service and for having to be involved in difficult conversations such as the ones related to school findings. This slide here shows the Nahant Public School changes from fiscal year two thousand twenty five, which is the year we're in. The twenty four, twenty five school year is called FY twenty five. The total increase to the budget in this version shows a two hundred and forty six thousand, two hundred and eight dollar increase in the budget. To sort of put that in perspective, last year, the increase was in the one ninety range. The year before, the increase was in the one ninety range. The year before that, we have a sheet a little later on, it was around one hundred and eleven. So, two forty six is a healthy ask of the taxpayers, but there are reasons for that. The budget is divided into three basic cost centers. The Johnson School, which are the major things that are in the walls of this school itself, and that's an increase of twenty thousand, one hundred and three dollars. The district part of the budget includes high school tuition and Essex Tech and all those types of things, and shows an increase of one hundred and ninety one thousand, one fifty nine. And the town increase shows thirty four, nine forty six. The factors affecting the budget, there are significant cost increases for special education, tuition, and transportation, two lines. Due to additional placements and change in placements, there's an increase of students that have to be in other specialized locations besides the Johnson School, from the nine kids that are in the program right now to twelve kids projected for next year. All salary increases. For the collective bargaining agreements in place, the Nahant Unit A, which are the teachers', increase for next year of a new three-year contract is three point two five percent. Unit B, which is the other union we have for the Paris support staff, is still being negotiated, and we don't have a final number on that. This budget reflects one less classroom teacher for grade five. That position was not filled when a teacher left to pursue other avenues of vocation earlier in the school year. We did have to add an additional ESP for special education. The school counselor is, shows an increased cost, not an increase in time, because Riley Edmonds is presently full-time, but a large proportion of her salary was funded from the federal ESER grant money. So, in order to keep Riley with us, which is critical to the success of this school for both the adults and the kids, the school budget has to absorb the loss of the ESER grants, because those are no longer here. The Swansky tuition for junior and senior high school students is a contract. It still has a couple of years left to go on it, and it has a very reasonable increase of two point five percent over this year's costs. And it doesn't matter how many kids there. You don't get a break off for less kids, and you are not charged if there are more kids going there. It's a set two point five percent increase. The Essex North Shore Technical School, we don't know what that increase yet is. We're projecting three percent. If it's higher, the budget will have to absorb that cost. If it's lower, the budget will have a little bit of leeway to it, because there won't be so much spent on vocational education. There are projected to be less kids at the vocational center next year. But we don't know what the new kids that are moving up to Swampskit Middle School and High School will decide to do, so it's hard to tell what exactly that cost will be, and it's also not been determined what their budget increase will be. So, those are the major changes. Significant impacts to the FY twenty six, which is next year's budget. Increased cost for the ESP, that's forty thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. Swansky's tuition, two point five percent, includes the sixth grade surcharge that was spread across, I believe, several years. And we didn't have to pay the entire amount for the sixth grade class that went to the Swampskit Middle School a year earlier after they left fifth grade. So, that tuition increase shows at forty two thousand, seven forty one. The out-of-district tuitions and transportations is one hundred and seventy thousand, six forty seven of the increase of the two fifty six. That's almost seventy percent of the increase. You also have to realize that the true increase in those two lines is three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and forty seven dollars. But we are using what is called Circuit Breaker, which is money that comes back to us a year after kids have been in placements from the state to try to lower the effect of that three twenty and get it down to a budget effect of one seventy. So, that's an unusual action to have to commit Circuit Breaker so early. But if we didn't do that, that two forty six would be a budget increase showing seven, eight, nine, ten percent. And that would be extremely difficult to do. So, the bottom line is the budget right now with those figures is the increase of two forty six, two oh eight. It's a five point one nine percent in costs over this particular year. The Johnson Elementary School changes from this year. Regular full-time employees' salary increases. Updated for current and budgeted staff collective bargaining agreements, as we mentioned earlier, three point two five in Unit A. The teachers', Unit B, support staff, Paris, to be decided. One less fifth-grade teacher, an additional ESP, the school counselor. Next year, we're planning for two sections of second grade and one section of kindergarten, grade one, three, four, five, and six. So, the net teacher-staff change is minus one classroom teacher, and therefore, the entire increase for the Johnson Elementary School section of the budget is twenty thousand, one hundred and three dollars, and that's eight percent of the total increase of the two forty six. District budget changes. Tuition, junior, senior high school, as I mentioned before, forty two thousand. That's seventeen point three six percent of the increase. Superintendent's office, an increase of four thousand. That's one point six seven percent of the total budget increase. School committee, I think they win the lowest increase percentage, nineteen hundred and ninety six dollars for a point eight one percent of the total budget increase. Again, out of, excuse me, I went quick. Out-of-district tuition and North Shore Educational Consortium, we're a member of that. The increase is one hundred and forty two thousand. That's basically fifty eight percent of the budget. And you need to remember, seventy five thousand of the one fifty in Circuit Breaker is applied to the tuition. If we hadn't have done that, tuition for special needs students that deserve those placements, need those placements, and are mandatory placements would have been two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars in that one line of our budget. Total district change, therefore, one hundred and ninety one, one fifty nine. It's well over a third of the total budget increase. The town changes. Out-of-district transportation, those are the ways that kids get to their out-of-district placements if their special education shows an increase of twenty seven thousand, two fifty three. And we've applied seventy five of Circuit Breaker to that. The seventy five for tuition, the seventy five in transportation makes the one fifty. So, if we hadn't applied seventy five to out-of-district transportation, that increase would have been over a hundred thousand dollars. The general end transportation for Healy Bus, the kids that go back and forth to Swampskit Middle High School and around Dahana, that's a set contract and has no increase in its base cost. Essex Tech, again, we don't know what the increase will be. We're figuring it at seventy seven hundred dollars. Total increase to the town, therefore, is about fourteen percent of the increase, thirty four thousand, nine forty six. This table shows you twenty five, twenty six comparison. We've kind of already talked about that. Johnson School section was one eight, four eight, one two nine in FY twenty five. That had been in last year. If you were sitting here at this time, that was an increase of forty four thousand over the year before. This year, FY twenty six, it's an increase of twenty thousand, and that's that one point oh nine. The district budget last year was an increase of eighty thousand over FY twenty four, which was the twenty three, twenty four year. And this year, we see a dramatic increase, mostly because of those special education mandatory costs of a hun- one hundred and ninety one thousand, which is an eight percent increase. The town budget, yah, last year was sixty five increase. This year, it's thirty four. That's six and a half percent. Total educational cost last year, the budget for taxpayers was four million, seven forty two, three thirty two, an increase of one ninety, one fifty seven over the year before. This year, we're asking for four million, nine hundred and eighty eight, five forty, an increase of two forty six, two oh eight, and that's a five percent increase. The last table shows you all the way back to FY twenty three, which is the twenty, twenty, twenty two, twenty three school year as it compares to the twenty three, twenty four school year, FY twenty four, as it compares to twenty four, twenty five, this school year, and then next year. So, you see those same increases we've just discussed, and you can see what they were back in the twenty two, twenty three year from twenty one, twenty two. So, there's the two point six percent was what taxpayers were asked to pay additionally for the school budget in FY twenty three, two point six percent increase, and then a hundred and ninety four, six oh seven, a four point five percent increase. This year, they were asked for a hundred and ninety one, fifty seven, a four point two percent increase. And then this year, we've got the two forty six, which is fifty six thousand dollars more than last year's increase, and it makes it over a five percent request. So, those are the major pillars of the budget. As you can see, it's driven by people costs, whether it be students' costs, especially students who have needs that can't be serviced at the Johnson School and deserve every amount of our effort and support for the programs that they're in. And those are very expensive programs, along with expensive transportations. And also for our human resources, our staff that work with kids, we are trying to be as respectful and reasonable as we can with how those folks are treated. And I think this is a good budget. It has to pass muster, obviously, with the finance committee, with the Selectmen. It competes with every other department that has the same needs. If you know anything about sort of town finance, the overall budget in a town without any new growth can only go up two and a half percent from one year to the next without something called an overrun, which is a special vote that the voters have to take to spend more than what the law says they should have to spend for a budget. And you can be on either side of a philosophical conversation about, is two point five percent enough? As a schoolperson, I argue it is not enough to run education in the world we're in that at some point, the cost of school for human resources and the capital of the kids that are in it really can't be funded at a two point five percent rate. I'll leave it to other departments to talk about their needs. They are less personnel-based. They are, in many cases, more stuff-based, for lack of a better word. Police cars are expensive. Fire trucks are expensive when those have to happen. The workers in those departments deserve fair wages as compared to their colleagues in other areas of the region. And it's just tough without any new growth or a lot of new growth in the town of Nahant to be able to have more than a set amount of dollars available for a subsequent budget. Now, you probably heard that there is Coast Guard housing being sold. That will turn into property that will be owned by people that will build on it. That will create new growth. But that doesn't happen overnight. That is one or two, maybe three years away before that new growth shows. Nahant is a residential community. There is no paper mill here. There is no steel factory or anything like that that can be taxed. It is basically all the money to fund everything within town comes from the property taxes of the citizens in the town. So, I would be willing to answer any questions from anyone in the room or anyone online. Kevin, we probably don't need this anymore. We can rotate it, and I can flick the light on. And with that, we have six or so minutes for questions.
I'll mount to the chat.
And again, the plan is to try to have this discussed a little bit later by the school committee members that are with us tonight, and then voted on February twenty fifth, which is right after we come back from vacation.
I'll see the same way in the chat.
So, anyone online could either join us verbally or could type something into the chat at the bottom of Principal Andrew's screen, and we would try to handle it for you. If not. Hearing none. We can move on.
Mister Panessa has joined online.
What's that, Kim?
Um Mister Panessa has joined online.
Great presentation, Rob, thank you.
Thank you, Greg, appreciate it.
Any comments?
Yep, we can move on.
Okay. And no other comments, then we certainly can move on.
Are we still only two board members though, or do we have a?
That's, that's what I.
Kevin, did you see where there's?
What I'm seeing right now is Mister Panessa and yourself.
And myself.
So we would have to.
Yeah, we'll defer the reading and the approval of the minutes, I know we're a little early, so we might have some other committee members after. So we can move on to the acknowledgement of many visitors. Who do we have?
I'd be happy to share with you that we have, as I mentioned, Mister Panessa. Kayla Harrington, Lydia Antrum, and Robin Howard online.
Well, thank you everyone for joining. Do we have any correspondence? I have not received any, Greg, I don't know if you have.
No. Just had those Girl Scout cookies for sale, or there were today.
Yes, I know, I know, it was such a crazy day, did it make it out on time to get? I hope it was. For those that are uh online, does anyone have uh any input that they would like to share? I don't see any hands.
Must see any in the chat.
All right, if not, then we'll move on to the examination and authorization for payment of bills.
So we have a uh list of bills in front of you that are standard uh items, no surprises. At a total of sixty two thousand, four ninety five, forty five. I don't think you can load it tonight. Come back to it later. I think the bills need to be paid, so I assume there's been processes where that has just occurred, and then you. Backfill it at the next, next time.
There is, there is, okay, so we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Yep, my uh report is fairly quick, uh the van is uh getting its final repairs over the vacation. And hopefully it's stenciling, it has a trip to Swampscut with uh. Kayla Harrington's sixth grade class, I believe on March fifth, that'll be its inaugural uh run, most likely. Uh we'll have it back for that, whether it has the nice blue lobster stencil on it or not, we'll have to see, but that's. Real close, the lady who's doing it uh had a hip operation, so that's set her back just a little bit. Um the greenhouse is becoming more of a reality, um. I think actually, Kevin, if you turn the screen one more time. Because of the Canadian tariffs, I don't think I told you last time. We have morphed into looking at a greenhouse of approximately the same cost. Not from Canada, where the tariffs were gonna create us a twenty five percent cost increase issue. To a extremely reputable greenhouse company in Hooks at New Hampshire. Uh this would actually be a little bit bigger, twenty by thirty six. Same frame, same polycarbonate coating, uh ideal for our needs, location. Uh behind the library and gym area. And now we have to look at installation, which. I originally thought, well, we'll just barn raise it with some volunteers and a local contractor that oversees it like we did. Back in Rockport, but times have changed a little bit. And the installer who I had contacted, the kit is forty nine thousand, the installer's estimate. Was somewhere between fifty five and sixty five thousand. For a couple of workers over a maybe ten day period of time. So I looked at that and I ran the math, and I said, that's really not very good. It's a public project, so it has to fund it through the town, even though it's a donation. Has to pay prevailing wage, and that's higher than a lot of. Companies would pay their workers, even though they already pay them well, prevailing wage. Increases the cost of all public product, projects. But I have been connected through some folks who. Know contractors and contact this person that are reputable. And they're working on some prices that I believe will fit well within our amounts. Uh we had a a gentleman without naming who the company is today, who's done work. Very successfully here at the Nah- Nahat School, specifically for Mister Andrews, who's interested in the project. And I believe we can get it done for our eighty thousand dollar donation that we have. We also, and Kevin, if you would turn the screen, because you're the maestro. At the. Help of Mariana Hire, who said, why don't you do a brick fundraiser? Well, I had some bricks made up by two companies. And the brick itself is eighteen dollars, but with a inscription of uh. In memory of Rob's father, Avril A. Lebo, M.D. or whatever. You could purchase the price for a yet to be determined exact amount. That would generate profit, and it would be used to create a walkway with these bricks, a permanent walkway. As a fundraiser, and that would help fund any overage we might have. Would fund uh the making of the garden beds, would fund the soil, would um. Make sure that the budget didn't have to absorb large amount of cost for the greenhouse, so I'm still. Just received these, working it, sort of developing a uh. Uh marketing plan for those, there are folks that say those ought to go for a hundred and fifty bucks a piece. There are others that say, well, how about seventy five for one, and you buy two or more for fifty? With the differential between the eighteen dollars and whatever you ask goes to profit. So somewhere there's a sweet spot of, yeah, I could buy the brick. Um not only to help the kids and help the school, but also to have a permanent. Memory of one of my loved ones or a positive message to the school. So I I thank Mariana for suggesting the brick fundraiser, it's done in many places. Uh colleges and stuff like that, their entire. Uh uh patios, outside patios are made with the parents of kids that go to school at that college, so. Uh that hopefully will be a nice way to not mess the grounds up and have a permanent memory of uh. Something that's cherished by the donor.
It's it's a great idea, um my son's former elementary school in Washington DC did that as a fundraiser, and it looks great. It's a, it's a nice memory to have, too.
Well, that would be my principal's report.
Superintendent's report, you mean?
My school principal for a long time. I was gonna say the greenhouse trip is like when I took my. Children for the first time I ever went to Disney World myself and took them when they were little kids. The only ride they could go on without being terribly scared, they couldn't go on Space Mountain, they couldn't go on some of that other stuff. They went on something called Mister Toad's Wild Ride. A pretty easy kind of ride for someone who's a kindergartner or or younger. And the greenhouse project is a little bit like Mister Toad's Wild Ride, but we'll get it done. We'll get it done, and it'll be turnkey and open for business in September.
Moving on to the principal's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm happy to share my report tonight. Um I wanted to start off by letting folks know what we were looking at for next year in the haunt. And our numbers, we had our open house, of course, where I shared this information with parents. Looking at in the fall, having twenty two, three year olds in the haunt. Twenty eight, four year olds and twenty four, five year olds. That last number is the projected number for who'd be eligible for kindergarten. So projecting twenty one kindergartners again, probably twenty to twenty one, and then two preschool classes again. That's what we're expecting. And I'm continuing to look at the after school program and see if we could do families. We did a survey to find out who'd be interested in enrolling some in something, we gave several options. Uh unfortunately, we just had uh about nine families interested in enrolling. In in a range of two, three, four, or five days. And altogether, it really wasn't able to add up to be sustainable for a program for the school year. On the good side, we had, um I've been in touch with a company called Champions. Which is offering a program from two fifteen to five fifteen. They're gonna be offering the program starting in the fall, they're gonna start enrollment in March. We've contracted with them already and exploring our membrane of understanding. They would offer a one to two day pro- one to two day a week program for a hundred and five dollars. Or a three to five day program at a hundred and seventy five dollars. They had a very flexible setup where you could change your days each week. In an online program that allows the parents to go in and say, look, and I don't need Tuesday this week, if you're a nurse. You picked up a shift, you can drop, drop a a session, pick up a different session. It's a very flexible schedule, they come in with a whole bunch of cards of equipment. Um activities, art supplies, science equipment, and they set up what they call interest areas, there was cities up in the library during the program. And they're looking to have an enrollment open in March, I've been in contact with Mister Levo about how this would work. And what kind of paperwork we need to do to have them come in, they sound really great. They're willing to open up with just even if they just have five students, they wanna get started here in the haunt, they wanna get foothold here. So I'm happy to share that.
That's great, I was gonna ask you if there was a minimum enrollment, but they're willing to go.
They're willing to, they're willing to just, they wanna just get, get them, you know, the ones that it, they have to build, you know. The reputation and trust with the families, so they believe once they get open and they're here, they'll be uh successful.
Mister Andrews, I had a question about that, um it's Beth, uh. How do, how have you asked them about uh staffing, like how do they intend to staff it, like? I just, what would, I I'm so excited about this idea, but.
I did, I did forewarn them about our challenges and what kind of rates they need to offer. They would have an onsite director that's well paid and would have benefits. Um so a semi full, almost full time position. And then their, their second person would have, would be, I I said market rates more of north than twenty dollars an hour. And they were comfortable with that. So we have some big conversations around what they need to offer to get them to come out and work here in the haunt.
Yep.
That is our biggest challenge, I think, I think um we also spoke with teachers here at the school. Again, and let them know what, what, what Champ- Champions is thinking about, cause there is still some interest in. Folks here who work here during the day, staying one night a week to work in a program, which would be great if they could. They wanna have a director five days, and then they can have a rotating support staff. Monday through Friday as well, if someone wants to do two days or three days or one day, they could be the support staff. But they're aware of what was the mark, the employment market's like out here. I can share a brief update from the curriculum committee, we have Kayla Harrington on the call tonight. And she's on the, she's on the curriculum committee as long as, as well as Gabby Radamark, who's chairing it. And we're looking at math programs, we've gotten our first batch of programs to pilot, including iReady. Um I have calls into HMH Math, which is what Swampscut uses. As well as um several other, we have about five that we're looking at closely, our next step is to offer teachers an opportunity to pilot. Let try lessons out, and then we're calling. Swampscut, all the neighboring districts that use the other programs that we're looking at to see how they, how they like them. And how the different components work together, including the technology components. So that works going along, while and we're expecting to have a proposal to you for late spring. Mm-hmm, for a new program to start in the fall. Finally, I wanna let you know that Northeastern University is, has returned, and they're doing visits with each class. They saw preschool this, last week, this week they're seeing grades K to six. Each class is a forty five minute lesson with, with the um Marine Science Center. And they bring about four to five university students with them, that students get to meet and work with on the lessons, and. They've been very successful, and it's great to have them back. Great.
Okay, are there any personnel updates?
There is, uh I'll let Kevin present that if you want to, again, either way.
Yep, I'd be happy to, um Madam Chair, under your um principal's report, I have the. Redacted resume of Melissa Austin. She has accepted the position today of long term substitute in the first grade. Miss Darrow is going out on leave within a matter of weeks. And Ms. Austin came to us through school spring, through our town, town ed program. Really happy with her, she's been teaching in New York City fifteen years as an ELL teacher. She has experience in educational leadership as well as in curriculum development, she's a certified teacher in New York. As well as um in Massachusetts with a one to six license. She's, has lots of experience teaching early elementary, and her passion is uh literacy in the young, younger grades. So I'm really happy that we were able to bring her on, Mister Levo signed her today.
And I was very pleased with, she just had the right vibe for the school and uh. Excited, she's gonna start uh overlap with Maddie Fodaro, who, her due date is around March seventh. Plus minus, and um. Melissa will come in on the Monday after break, which is February twenty fourth. And overlap at the sub rate of pay until Maddie has her child. And then she will transition into uh Masters Step One, which is what we pay a long term sub. With with a master's degree uh for the rest of the year, but that'll give. Her a chance to get to know the kids, the kids a chance to get to know her. And sort of a little tag team going on, and if Maddie needs to leave early, then uh the. Kids will have a seamless transition, and I I think we're in a, a good position, and we all wish uh Maddie the very best. As she moves forward in a very exciting part of her life. That'd be Melissa Austin. We could back for at least two minutes, if you wanna do minutes and.
Yeah, I mean.
Put it at the end, either way.
Yeah, no, we could do it at the end, let's just go in the war and then I'll jump back up.
We don't have a lot of other business.
I was gonna say, I don't think we have anything old to cover or anything new to cover. In terms of other committee business, are we ready to talk about the Johnson School calendar for twenty twenty five?
I was gonna try to jam it through tonight, and then I had better thoughts, uh I got a call from. Pam Angelakis, who said, we should have the draft this week for you. So I, I, I think it's important to see where Swampscut has days. How they relate to professional development days where we have them, and if we can do some synchronization. That we should try to maybe move some things around, so I'm hopeful we'll have the. Proposed draft, which is pretty close to probably what their final version will be. That we could consider the calendar at the February twenty fifth meeting. Or the next meeting in early March, uh we're still on a good timeline in terms of. Getting that information out to families in in terms of the calendar, so we're gonna.
Table.
Hold that back tonight again.
And in terms of discussing the school budget from fiscal year twenty twenty six. All school committee members, we see budget one, we see budget two. We are uh, gosh, myself and Rob, we're going to town hall tomorrow, we're gonna meet with um Tony Barletta. And we were gonna meet on Monday, actually, but Allison was ill. So hopefully she's feeling better and we'll be able to meet tomorrow, and we're going to go over um both versions of the budget. I did receive a call from Tony yesterday, and Rob, I think you also spoke to him. The town budget is very, very tight, they're very struggling in terms of trying to balance the budget for the year. Um so we'll talk more, but realistically speaking, I think the second version of our budget. It is not gonna be viable this year. Um but we'll know more tomorrow as we talk. Um but we'll know more tomorrow as we talk through the state of affairs for the town in the hot. And we can continue the conversation in our next school committee meeting that we'll have later in the month.
I would just like to say that based on our discussion with Tony Barletta before, I just get nervous that. It's not gonna be in the budget this year. It's not gonna be in the budget next year. It's just that they're just not gonna make it in the budget. Um. You know, and that was that was honestly the sense that I got was, you know, you could keep wishing, but. Don't wish too hard. Um so I that's just one concern that I would like to raise, you know, to depend on. The build-out of the Coast Guard housing and the tax revenue that's gonna be generated from those properties. At some unknown time in the future, I mean, I just, I I don't hold my breath for things like that. Um and we all know that. During that unknown time going into the future, other departments in the town are also gonna come up with. Additional expenses and things that they would like as well. Um so. I completely understand where you're coming from, Patty, but I just hope that. The townspeople don't lose sight of the importance of the Johnson School to this town. And and I do think that it's an issue, that the townspeople, not just the residents who have kids in the school. Need to be cognizant of, and I just don't know that that message is getting out there to the masses uh the way that I think it should be.
No, I agree with you. I completely agree with you, Greg.
One other thing they do have, Greg, that uh I'm not even sure that Tony mentioned it. He he may have sort of been passing near the end is that uh. There is some debt service that is being retired retired. I think it's on the building of. The addition to this school is being reduc- uh retired. So there's an annual. Payment that that's quite large, that it's not year-to-year money, but once it goes off the books, that does give a little bit of uh. Springboard to uh, you know, what's going on. Plus, you know, we have additional sped expenses and transportation, but. It all it takes is a a child who may be in a. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar between tuition and transportation situation to move on. Uh graduate, leave the school system. That there is some possibilities to be able to. Make meaningful progress forward, which I think is our jobs to do on behalf of the kids. And I I do, I haven't known Tony all that long, but I I do believe in my heart and soul that he. Is committed to doing what's right by kids as well. He has to juggle multiple masters plus the. Concept of override, but I I do think at some point. Every community has to at some time face an override discussion. Because a two-point-five percent. Growth from year to year, except for any new property tax growth. When you don't have businesses and that sort of thing. Uh it's just not sus- sustainable for that to happen. And that you have to be able to put forward the reasons why you're asking for an override. And to ask for an amount that is also acceptable and doesn't come back to the taxpayers. Every three, four, five years, that it gives the budget enough longevity. That at at some point it needs to be refueled. I I think that law was put in to not. Squash towns and schools and what they wanted to do, but uh. Control. Spending and the rates, and I'm not sure it's keeping up with some of the needs of uh. You know, especially schools coming out of COVID and the mental health type issues and the. Learning type challenges that we have. I mean, we may find ourselves, and I hope we don't. That there's discussions at the federal level of dismantling the Education Department and some of the funding streams. Well, if they did away with the sped grants and they did away with Title One grants. Uh we have positions that are funded completely through those federal grants. Our special services director, the team chair. One of our teaching staff are are funded through those two major streams, and if for some reason those. Disappeared or were redirected, uh we could find ourselves in a. Where do we find X, Y, and Z more than what we're in right now? So. Uh I I'm worried at the pace of some of the discussions and who's in the. Collateral. Actions of decisions that are made, I think is the best way to say it, because it affects.
Rob.
It affects kids' lives. To me, that's not acceptable when it starts affecting kids' lives and their futures. So. I've done enough of an editorial. I will get off my woolly poodle.
Robbie, welcome to the editorial. It's actually where I was gonna go. Um and you went there, so I I'll actually just give my comment. My my question was gonna be how much? What percentage of our budget is um federal? You may or may not know that federally funded.
All of uh Mary DiGardia's budget from the, now she's one, two-day-a-week, who works three, four, five days a week. So her entire salary is from that. Uh the team chair is also not a full-time employee, but the entire salary is from that. Uh Title One, I would say that's probably, I don't have the figure rate rate in hand, but. Tickling two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so my most school systems that I'm working with right now are are not planning, but. Cuz there many don't even know what to do, especially smaller ones like Nahat, but um. They're trying to start thinking about what it would, what, given the indiscriminate and rather uneducated way that um. You know, the federal um. Centers are being attacked right now and gutted. Uh. It seems like um. It would be foolish for us to not be thinking about this. And Patty, I guess where I sit is, this is the wrong time for the town. To be um kind of saying to us, especially given what's happening nationally. That we can't have another um something that's gonna elevate our impact on young people, right? And so, I mean, I think the differences between the two budgets centered around a math specialist, if I don't, if I remember right from two weeks ago. Is that true?
Yeah.
It was for a math specialist, you know, and I think we're um, we could potentially be in a world of hurt in the ways that Rob just detailed. And I just think like making sure that we're shoring up our students and our and the education that we're providing as much as we can while we can. Feels like the right move. I also agree with, independent of how you feel about what's happening in Washington. I completely agree with what Greg said earlier, that um if we don't. If we don't have a thriving school system. Given the fact that we, there are some things that we can't control, like um that here at the school committee. Um like the prey, the fact that a a teacher on her own or his own in the hot cannot afford to buy a house in the hot. So now we did some other things that are good for teachers, you know, in our in our latest work here, but but that weighs on me. It also makes us, it makes it hard to compete to have the the world-class education system that we do. So we wanna make sure that we're continually investing in it. So people continue to wanna work here and people continue to wanna come here and send their kids here. It's the only way the town's gonna be viable. It's too small to take many hits. And so I really feel strongly that um I know the budget's tight, and I think Tony did a a really great job. And I can't even imagine what it's like to be him right now. It's not about him. I think he is really trying. And we've gotta find a third way to get to um a school staffing structure. That that Rob and Kevin want to be able to make sure we're bringing the best to our kids and the support to other teachers. You know, who would wanna work with somebody like this? Like, this is a good thing for a school system to do.
Sort of remembered my education career was when I first started in Rockport, Mass, the uh board chairman there, uh Michael Kelly with. Every time the budget came up, he said, our job is to speak for those who don't have a voice. That, you know, the kids can't vote and they can't really express, but the people who were once kids now have the power and the that. It's really super important to. Do everything you can for the for those people, cuz they're the future. And I understand competing needs and all that, but uh. Have them in a sort of a juggling match and pass them back and forth, I I find unpleasant, I guess, is the only way I can describe it, because uh. They shouldn't be living in a world that's sort of unknown. The. Title One support, the reading supports that come out of it, if those funds went away. And 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 a kid didn't have pullout services with somebody who could work with them uh to help them with their math, that. Affects your entire lifetime, what you do and what you earn and where you go and. That's not just some bloated bureaucracy. I'm sorry. It's I'm sure there's a little bit that can be properly managed, but not. Sweeping changes, I think, create unintended consequences. And I'll stop, cuz I shouldn't be editorialized.
I just wanna say also that I hope it's clear. I wasn't trying to shoot the messenger in Tony. I think he's got a very difficult job. I don't envy him at all. Um and you know, I think one of the other issues is I I am new to this school system. I'm not sure what the typical. Class sizes were, but you know, I keep hearing twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. It seems like the classes are are bigger than they used to be. And again, I may be completely wrong on that. But to me, that means that you need more staff, not less staff, you know, I mean.
I agree, and we did talk about it yesterday and.
Uh Greg, the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen's was sort of the sweet spot. And when you got in the twenty-two, twenty-three, you were. Because of, you know, it wasn't stand and deliver instruction anymore. It's it's so individualized and differentiated that. Um you can't juggle that and do justice to the education of kids. It isn't, it isn't the way. Education is done anymore. It's not the way businesses are run anymore. It's it's. Teaching kids communication skills and working together with each other is a amazing juggling act. It's not like when I went to school, you just went in, sat in your chair and. Kept your mouth shut and listened and spit it back a couple of weeks later. Uh it's not the way the world is anymore for the kids who are gonna enter it when they go to the workforce. Or how they need to learn now, and that costs money. That costs. Good, prepared staff and support staff and um the world's just different.
Look, it's gonna come down to the tax over, right? It it is, I know, and if it's not this year, you know, it it definitely needs to be next year. And it really need to talk to the finance committee about it. Uh not just for the school, but for for all services here in.
And I know we talk about people being able to live in town and all that, and that's important to me, but in the end, as a school committee member. You know, my focus is on the school. You know, I want it to be a diverse community and people who wanna live here to be able to live here, but. There's only so many things that we can each worry about each day.
Of course, I know, I know. Very true. But I'll keep you guys posted. We will push and we will look at, and I know Allison is scrutinizing every dollar. So I don't envy her in one capacity, but we we will look at everything tomorrow.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Right.
Thanks for doing that, Patty. Appreciate you.
Well, no, I appreciate all of you. Alright, so we can look at our future agenda items and then move back to approving the minutes. And also.
Future agenda items. I'm gonna put an executive session on the twenty-fifth of February. For an update on the negotiations process with Unit B, the uh paraprofessionals. And it's possible we may be able to even uh. If things go well, to have a vote that evening on a potential new contract. So that would be an important night to uh be at school committee so that we could, if the. Stars align properly, that we could get our second and last union contract uh. Settled. So there's still some unknowns and things that have to occur, but I'm very hopeful about that process that we'll be able to. Pull that off on that uh night.
Rob, was that the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Uh yep.
Okay.
And then preschool restructuring staffing proposal, the. Teachers are still sort of working on what the plan would look like to. Uh benefit the kids that are in the program, so we'll we'll just keep working at that till we get all the numbers and. What that looks like and see whether we can uh, you know, pull it off within the existing fee structure or whether the. The fee structure might have to be changed slightly. Well, we're still a little bit of unknown on that. We will uh present the district report card, which is an annual uh requirement. And uh I still carry the approval of appointment of the representative to the Essex Tech Board as a future agenda item. Somebody's lurking out there to get appointed and.
Yes.
We don't have somebody at the table, I guess, when Essex Tech votes their budget and that sort of thing, so. Uh would be important to have a voice there, I think. It's a seventeen districts, I think, seventeen towns, as I remember.
It is.
So it's a very big board and I don't even know how it's the weight of the vote, whether Nahat's so small, it's sort of like. It's a little finger sticks up or it's one man, one vote per town. I don't know. I don't. Think it is, because the amount of money and students probably drives the voting power, but. Uh that that I have to research on that. So those are our future agenda items. And otherwise than that, all we have is minutes to hopefully approve, which were sent out after the last meeting and then the budget list.
Yes, so has everyone had an opportunity to uh review the minutes from our meeting on the twenty-eighth of January? And if so, and if there are no edits, could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on the twentieth of January.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last item on the list is the.
And the bill warrant again, consisting of uh typical items, uh again, like. You folks don't have it at home, but uh there's nothing on here that is unusual. Uh total is sixty-two thousand four ninety-five forty-five is the amount.
Could I have a motion to approve sixty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-five cents?
Motion to approve the expenditure of sixty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, if there are no future items, could I have a?
I have a future, I have a future item. Sorry, it's not long. Um I I have a. Once a year standing thing that uh unfortunately this year fell on the the twenty-fifth of February. So I will not be able to be there. Um if it's critical that we're all there for the sort of uh. Um signing in of the new contract, then uh we might need to find a do some date finagling. You've got this, Patty.
A quorum, we're we're okay.
Okay. Then maybe getting that out, making sure that um everybody else can be there. Which I'm happy to do for us, if you want, um since I cannot be there.
Yeah.
Do you want me to do that, Patty?
No, you don't have to do that. When we send out the minutes, Rob, for our meeting for the twenty-fifth. If Chris would just state that, you know, we must be physically for that meeting. And if unable to do so.
Yeah, and and since we have vacation next week and then there's the meeting, it's not gonna be filled with items. We'll.
Yeah.
We'll vote a budget. We'll go into executive session, discuss what uh where we're at with regard to negotiations and if we're. Prepared to vote and the union has been prepared to vote, then we could. Solidify that contract that night and get that approved. And otherwise than that. We're not gonna come back with a whole lot of principals reports. Nothing's changed. Superintendent's reports, nothing's gonna have changed. We have. Two or three more school days and then we have one school day, so uh there's not gonna be massive business. We might have some bills. We might have a bill warrant. And maybe. And maybe the calendar, but I think we could put that into March.
Yeah.
Because we, I do think we wanna know what Swamp Scott's doing, and not miss the, the vote on, they have a vote, and they move two days around, and we just force something through that there's no necessity to force through, so.
No, no, we, we should be aligned.
At some point, it has to be sent to the state, and at some point, parents need to see it to plan summer vacations and that sort of thing. But otherwise than that, we're okay on our timeline. So we'll keep it short, no matter what.
Don't, don't stress. Alright, so with that said, if there are no other announcements, could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-six PM.
Second.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Feel better, Beth.
Okay, Kevin, get home.
Yeah, sure will.
Get home.
I, I hope we sounded okay tonight.
I'm coming for my, just clear upon, I'm, I'm coming for my ten-thirty meeting with Tony and Patty, but I might not do my ten-to-five drive tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you, yeah, dodge the traffic, will you?
Yeah.
And you take care of you.
Thanks, I will. I am.
Take whatever time you need to take care of yourself.
Thank you.